Alright, so you guys ready? Alright, so in five, four, three, two.
Good evening, I want to call to order this meeting of the Board of Selectmen. It is now seven twelve and I will be chairing the meeting tonight in Chairman Katie Conlon's absence, she's not feeling very well tonight, so I'll be pinch hitting tonight. So, the first order on the agenda is review and approval of meeting minutes. This time there are currently no minutes to approve. The next item on the agenda is to confirm future meeting dates. The Board will meet again on July twelfth, two thousand and sixteen, and we haven't established any other dates and I'm gonna wait for Chairman Conlon to get back to us to look at future dates, if that's okay with you.
Sure, that's fine. Is it, am I looking wrong here? Oh, that's true, okay.
Item number four on the agenda is Citizen Speak. If anyone cares to come up and speak to the Board, they may now. If you could come up and have a seat and announce yourself, that would be great.
Sure.
Hello, my name is Carol Stalker. I live at two ninety-one Hillside Street. I'm here with several other members of my neighborhood and I'm representing Scott Johnson, who's President of the Hillside Neighborhood Association. Since Hillside Street and Forest Street are officially designated as scenic roads, I am asking an immediate cease and desist order to the paving and widening of these two streets, which is underway right now, until there's an opportunity to obey the scenic road bylaws by getting permission from the Planning Board to make these major changes in these two roads and also in consultation with the Conservation Commission, which has not done. The scenic road bylaws say ways designated as scenic roads will not be altered by the decision of any person, organization, or agency other than the Planning Board after consulting with the Conservation and Historical Commission in accordance with procedures specified herein. Now, I have lived in this neighborhood for thirty-five years and in thirty-five years, Forest Street has never been paved. But yesterday, it was not only paved for the first time, it was widened from fourteen to sixteen feet into a super slab, which is going to render it a cut-through for out-of-town commuters who would otherwise be using Chickatahobit Road where there are no residents. Nobody lives up there except coyotes and deer. So why are we paying to reroute out-of-town commuters into a residential neighborhood to save a couple of minutes with this super slab? And I talked yesterday, we had a neighborhood meeting of very alarmed and unhappy people. I met a new neighbor named Sarah, who had bought a house at thirty-two Forest Street only three months ago. She had twins two years ago. She has a two-year-old. She's terrified. The head of our committee is a mother of triplets under the age of two. Why are we endangering these people? We looked at what they laid down, they broke their word and widened the street. They said they were gonna keep it to eighteen feet. This was the DPW between Forest and Parkway Drive, and then they just went back on their word and without consulting us, they widened it to twenty feet. And there is no room left for pedestrians, there's no room left for children, there's no room left for runners, there's no room left for teenage girls on their horses, there's no verge on the edge of the road anymore. It's just this blacktop and they want to go and put a second layer of blacktop down to make it even faster. Now, how is this promoting public safety? How is this promoting public safety? Our neighborhood is outraged and up in arms about this. And at the meeting that we had this week, there was an almost unanimous vote to try to get Harland Street, Forest Street, and the end of Hillside Street closed so we can become a loop, a closed loop, because what this paving has done is so endangering our children for no purpose except to add a couple of minutes off for out-of-town commuters by giving them an alternative to approved and excellent commuter roads, which are Unquity and Chickatahobit that are there. This is the stupidest thing I have ever seen in my life and they have really pulled a fast one on us and we are outraged. And I have to say that it makes no sense whatsoever and it wasn't done with the community and the community is suffering and the community is frightened and the community is very unhappy about this. And we're going to have more meetings, we're going to, as I said, I hope you will give us a cease and desist and I also, we also want a road grinder, so that's not the super slick slab it is, and we want a road cutter to cut the road back to its original width as agreed upon. What's left now of the edge is not, creates a public health hazard. This shortcut is on Google and since the advent of Google, our safety has been the bumpy road. There has been no police enforcement of our thirty mile per hour speed limit and now people, even in the first day of paving, which was yesterday, people are now zooming through at fifty miles an hour. And before the paving, we did a study and sixty percent of the people were speeding. But now they're speeding much faster. This has to be stopped, we need a cease and desist order, it needs to go before the Planning Board, and no more. Stop it. Otherwise, it's a fait accompli and our neighborhood is ruined. And it is a historic neighborhood, I live in an eighteen forty-five house. And I think this was done by a bunch of out-of-towners who have no idea that this neighborhood was a beloved neighborhood used by joggers and riders and especially, it's the last street, the last neighborhood inside of one twenty-eight where you can see people riding horses along the street. And I think a bunch of outsiders came in and didn't realize it and they just are mad for laying asphalt for no good reason and we are furious. That's what I have to say. But I have other members of my neighborhood would like to speak if you want to give them time.
Sure. If you could please just come up and state your name, thank you.
Yes, good evening, my name is Claudia Clifford and I live at four seventy-five Harland Street and I'm just here to support Carol. Unfortunately, we found out about this bylaw.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Sure, we found out about this bylaw that restricts the paving of these streets without conferring with the CONCON, the Historical Commission, and the Planning Board at three o'clock in the morning today. One of our neighbors was worried about the construction and if you could see the road, you would see exactly what we're talking about, how it's been widened, there is no shoulder to the road and we do have all these people on horseback, we have lots of families, lots of kids, lots of joggers and bicyclists, and right now, it is a hazard. But it's an outrage to us that the DPW has proceeded and has completely bypassed the laws that are, that regulate this kind of construction. They've done it, we're lucky, it's fortuitous, that one of our neighbors found this at three o'clock in the morning and that's why we're here today. We wish that we had, we were trying to rally as many troops as we could to come to tonight's meeting, but we were, it was sort of an eleventh hour effort. But you have an entire neighborhood who's up in arms about this and we want something done. And so, we're here before the Board of Selectmen, here at Citizen Speak to make our concerns known to you folks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, we have Joe Lynch here. Would you be able to hear at this point to have Joe Lynch?
Yeah, we actually do have one more citizen and then I would like to have our DPW Director come up and speak. We typically don't do that, we usually hold our responses to the end of the meeting, but I think this is fitting and this, since he's here.
Roberta Williamson Seymour, five-ten Harland Street. I'm talking basically about the safety issues. No notice was sent out to neighbors that this was being changed until the last moment. There was an agreement with neighbors that Hillside Street would stay at the eighteen feet width that it has been. And then suddenly, without any, as we understand it, authorization from Planning Board, the neighbors were suddenly told that it was going to be widened. No notices were sent out, certainly there was no notice of any Planning Board meeting if there was one, you know, that was held, nobody got notices, I doubt there was. And, you know, I'm a physician, I'm very concerned about safety for children. If you go, if you have a walk in our neighborhood now, you will see that we have these historic stone walls, we're the Scotswoods Historic Neighborhood. There are no sidewalks because we're a historic neighborhood. And so now, the wide, what used to be an area you could walk on between the stone walls and the road has been so narrowed, it's going to be almost impossible at areas for anyone to walk safely. So I'm very concerned and really would appreciate the Board of Selectmen taking this as a really serious concern because it will be on all of our shoulders, all of our shoulders, our hearts, a burden on all of us if someone gets hurt. Thank you.
Okay, this time I'd like to call up our DPW Director, Joe Lynch.
Hi, Joe.
Hi, how you doing? I'm not gonna speak in hyperbole, I'm not gonna speak in emotion, I'm gonna speak in fact. We are fully aware of the requirements of the historic scenic roadways provisions of the state law. We are also fully aware of the provisions of the Wetlands Protection Act. That roadway that is out there, we pre-measured every hundred feet and every fifty feet there in the intersections of the existing width. That roadway is no wider than it was, with the exception of the tapering between Harland Street and Forest Street where it ranged from twenty to eighteen feet is now twenty feet over that full three-hundred-foot length. It's eighteen feet all the way out to the Hillside Pond area, DCI jurisdiction, and Forest Street is sixteen feet over its full length. So as such, it has not been altered or widened and therefore does not fit into the Scenic Roadways Act provisions, therefore no Planning Board requirement necessary. Not only that, there was conversations with a Planning Board member as we were pulverizing with, God said, with requirements and though he was concerned, we were all concerned, we documented it, meaning physical measurements on record, that we did not need to come in and seek such permission. The roadway being within a roadway surface, existing, you know, maintenance of an existing roadway is exempt under the Wetlands Protection Act and even that being said, it only applies in one area and that's where it crosses Ford Ranch Road at the, at the brook, just at that intersection, no other area. So it's exempt on that act, under that act. What you're looking at is a next step in a long process, which included replacement of all the water mains out there, the gas mains out there, and now the roadway pulverizing last week and paving completed today and began on Tuesday. And from there is going to be all the shoulder restorations and raising all the structures to grade and then the final top. Yes, it's a new surface roadway, the old falling apart McAdam roadway and all the claims that we paid for damaged tires and rims and whatnot is part of what we do, is rebuild roadways. It's going to be faster, we are returning the speed bumps that were there, though philosophically and professionally we're dead set against them, we pledged to put them back because they were there. They don't comply with any federal standard or state highway standard for that matter and quite frankly, pose a certain level of liability to the town, but we're putting them back. So I stand here very proud of the work that we've done out there and disagree vehemently with the allegations made that we did this for some ulterior motive to encourage through traffic from other communities and the fact that we may have widened the roadway, we did not.
Was there any communication with the neighbors, this neighborhood, it's a historical neighborhood, just a, you know, any notice given, you know?
Leaf-lit, leaf-litted prior to the pulverizing, leaf-litted prior to the paving through the entire water construction project when the gas company came in, this roadway project has been coming through with full knowledge for well over a year.
Joe, what about the shoulder area, is, in the repaving process?
So all that, right, so when they pulverize, they grind up the old roadway, they set a grade so to promote proper drainage, which is how a roadway fails. There are areas that get disturbed on the shoulder, those, once the pavement gets in, which is, you know, the binder now, once all the structures get up to the right grade, all those shoulders with the grade all come back and get rigged back in and nice smooth transition, some get seeded.
So the shoulder will be back to the width it was originally?
That's correct, that is correct. So with the only exception of Harland Street to Forest, that road's exactly the same width and in that area between Harland and Forest, what was twenty feet tapering down to eighteen is now uniformly twenty feet. Just to put that in perspective, from Randolph Avenue all the way up to that location at Harland, it was already twenty feet, so that last three-hundred feet remains twenty feet. And they did that principally because of the turning movements associated with the people turning from Hillside onto Harland, from Harland onto Hillside, and those who make the S-turn up into Forest. You know, it's just a...
My biggest concern is, you know, we talk about kids and we talk about safety and I think that that should be the major concern. You know, obviously you have to pave a street that has to be paved at some point in time. I understand that, but the safety, I just want to make sure that we're not compromising anything.
I'm gonna stand here and state a fact, that speed is always an end result of a newly paved road and that there always needs to be followed-up enforcement, selective enforcement and strict enforcement to discourage that. Putting speed bumps back in certainly put those types of hindrances back in place that were previously there, which is going to be happening prior to that finished product going in.
Joe, is there any other traffic calming that can be done in that area?
Not without, ironically, without varying the scenic roadways. You have to do land takings, introduce S-curves and bump outs. The roadway layout itself is so narrow, there are no other provisions to provide chicanes or offsets.
Okay. So until those speed bumps go back in, obviously people can travel at, you know, faster speeds and they're not as likely to do it with the speed bumps, but they know they're there.
I mean, just let me say that even when it was ground up, graded and rolled last week, still a dirt road. It was far better than what was there and people were already speeding on a dirt road.
So is it possible to ask the police to, just until at least those speed bumps get back, to increase the traffic enforcement in that area?
Yeah, I'd like to say that not only during this period, but for the foreseeable future, that, you know, because there is concern about the cut-through traffic, that, you know, it may negate that over a great period of time.
Now, what John Thompson and I also spoke about as we were, you know, looking at the design and the end result of this is even at sixteen feet on Forest Street, it is too narrow. We're debating to bring the question before the Traffic Commission, to ask them to consider, you know, Forest Street being one-way in one direction or the other. The irony there is, is when you take a street that's sixteen foot wide and make it one-way, it has the opposite effect that when you're traveling in that direction, it increases speed, whereas leaving it substandard and narrow and folks have to negotiate around each other actually has a calming effect of just making people drive more cautiously when there are two cars on the road. But we've asked amongst ourselves, that we probably want to bring this to the Traffic Commission, at least better understand whether it makes sense to make it one-way or not.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Certainly the one-way could help the cut-through impact, I guess, on Forest.
Depends on the time of day, depending which way they're commuting.
Hmm, okay.
One of the things that I'd like to, you know, as a measure of follow-up is when we, when we do things, continue to communicate with the neighborhoods that are gonna be impacted, as you do, and make sure that they're a part of the process, because I think it's very important.
Yeah, without singling an individual out, I mean, we thought we had such a person in the neighborhood, we thought we were communicating accurate information, not any different than I've just conveyed now. We understood that that person had the control of a mailing list of the Neighborhood Association, that in fact was what was happening. I sort of verified that by one of the phone calls I got from a Planning Board member who happens to live there, who had gotten word through that, through that method. So I thought that we had a pretty good continual vehicle for getting information out on a pretty dynamic basis.
Okay. I guess, Maria, if there's anything else further on this, maybe, you know, having to do with the neighborhood or any other ongoing issues that maybe it could be run through your oversight?
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Through our office.
What I heard in public Citizen Speak was a request for cease and desist. I implore upon the Board of Selectmen to allow us to do our job, do it properly and be proud of it. Don't stop our job if you can. We have thirteen million dollars of construction ongoing in town right now and at any second, any blip in that schedule throws things into kilter and could really fall us up. But the pledge is to put it back, if the width it is, which is what it was, and to put the speed bumps back. And that's what we had always pledged to do. I don't, I would hope that we don't have a stop work order for any other reason, certainly not for missing any process, through any hearing process that would have otherwise been required because that's simply, you know, not correct.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Do we have anybody else just in speaking?
My name is Bill Roach, I live on Harland Street, and I was just looking for a little better explanation as to why they're widening Forest Street. I heard, you know, because of safety reasons, but if residents can't walk down the street, how is widening it helping the safety of the street and the neighborhood?
You know what, if you want to come up, Joe, and we'll just answer this and I think that, and I appreciate everybody's comments, but I think that after that, then potentially we could walk the line to a meeting.
I didn't say we widened Forest, I'm sorry, I said we did not widen Forest. Forest is sixteen feet, which is what it was. What we did do was on Hillside Street between Harland and Forest, where it tapered from twenty feet down to eighteen feet, that three-hundred-foot stretch, it's like more like two-hundred-and-fifty feet, is uniformly twenty feet. So if, for all intent and purpose, the very end of that stretch is two feet wider than what it was, but the very beginning is exactly what it was and it was only through that S-turn, we did not widen Forest at all.
And that's because vehicles were having trouble making the turn?
And it's only because of the churning movement that occurs from Forest onto Hillside onto Harland and from Harland onto Hillside onto Forest. It's that S-turn that requires the additional width.
Okay.
And that was evidenced by the prior condition, is all those corners were all heavily eroded and from wheel traffic going over them.
I thought it was, my understanding that Forest was being widened from fourteen to sixteen feet.
It is sixteen and it was not fourteen.
Okay.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Is there anybody else in the audience tonight that would like to speak at Citizen Speak? Okay, seeing that there is none, we're gonna move on to item number five, and that's recognition of the Milton High Girls Track Teams. And I know that we have some members from the Milton High Girls Track Teams with us. We also have Dion Cricklow, who is an assistant coach. I first want to start and say that what these girls have accomplished is really, it's record-breaking. We have three teams that won state titles. Two of them won All-State titles, which, for those of you at home that don't know what an All-State title is, it's basically, you've beaten every single type of school at every level, whether that be the largest school, the smallest school, or a regional school. So, and for a school like Milton High, which has under a hundred, excuse me, under a thousand students, to have two teams accomplish that statewide against, you know, the powers of Lowell and Brockton and all of those is just truly remarkable. Coach Tom Shaw won the MIA Coach of the Year this year. He's not able to be with us tonight, I believe he's traveling, but under his direction and under Coach Cricklow's direction, these girls have accomplished something really that I'm not so sure any other town has. And it's, it brings me a lot of excitement and I know my fellow colleagues, to have them here tonight to represent the Milton Track Teams. The Milton, one thing I want to say is that the Far All-Cross Country Team was the first time they won since nineteen ninety-eight, you know, and that was quite an accomplishment. The Girls Indoor Track Team won the state title at the Reggie Lewis Center in January and the Outdoor Track Team won the All-State title in Westfield in the spring. So if I could call upon Coach Cricklow to come on up to the microphone with her girls, introduce her girls so that we could formally recognize them and congratulate them for their achievements. There were also four All-Americans from these teams, which again, I mean, the lists just keep going on and on, so congratulations, girls, you've done an unbelievable job, the town is proud of you. You know, I think that, you know, for many, many years, people will be talking about your accomplishments and we hope that they continue. So for further ado, Tom, if you'd like to...
I mean, I can just echo what you just said, you said it very well, but it's an amazing accomplishment, you should all be very proud of yourself. To be a student athlete is a very special thing. It takes commitment, it takes commitment to keep your grades up and it's just a life-rewarding experience, so congratulations.
So without further ado, I'd like to have Coach Cricklow introduce, and girls, if you want to just step up as she introduces you and put a little wave to the camera so you recognize, that would be great.
So the first person I'd introduce is Mairead, which is our team captain. Mairead is actually, yeah, one of the only seniors that we actually have here, Mairead. So just saying that part is we are a very, very young team, so it's sad to see Mairead go, but she did an unbelievable job of leading our troops. I'd like to introduce, let's see, Naomi, Ashley, Eliza, Clota, Bridgette, Ali, Ella, and Colette. So this is a really small group of our girls, we actually have a team of almost sixty girls, so we have a huge population in the athletic department, it's actually between our cross-country, our indoor and our outdoor team, and that's just our, I can't even explain what these girls have done. To say that this is the first time that Milton High School has ever done this, this is the first time that any school in Massachusetts have done this. So, I mean, we were overwhelmed by the great success, we are looking forward to having even more success. The only thing that we missed out on was our indoor All-States, so our goal this year is to do the same thing and just add the indoor All-State to it and maybe we can make it so hard that no one will be able to do it again but us, which would be really nice. So we just like to say thank you for having us here and really appreciate everything that the town has done for us. We've had a lot of support from our town, a lot of support, so we'd like to say thank you for having us.
Yeah, and you know what, a lot of the girls weren't able to make it tonight, I understand that a lot of them went to the beach today.
Most of these girls are at the beach also.
That's right, as they should be, you know, and congratulations on a great school year and I think a little applause is due to you all.
Thank you, congratulations.
We look forward to seeing the All-State Girls Team in the winter next year. Well, that's some great positive news.
Certainly is.
Okay, item number six is a public hearing on the storm water regulation rate setting and we have Martin Pillsbury and Joe Lynch at DPW, Director here. So if you could come on up, Joe.
Good evening, how you doing? We are on the home stretch if we're not approaching the finish line on this long process that we embarked upon in the fall. And there are two pieces of business that remain, oh, three if you will, pieces of business that need to be completed. One is concluding of the public hearing, which started two meetings ago, this being the third meeting to gather input on the storm water fee proposals that we have been talking about. The continuation of that hearing is to include adoption of regulations as part of our bylaw. You need to have regulations which give you the details of on how various parts of the bylaw get carried out. And this regulation that has been submitted to the Board speaks to specifically the storm water utility in the fee portion of the bylaw only, not any of the other storm water parts of it.
That will come later.
Be coming at a later date, stay tuned. So, logistically, the regulation would need to be voted and therefore adopted prior to, it can be immediately prior to, but would need to be in place prior to any vote of the Board to adopt the fee. So, you know, that's what we're here to do. The regulations that are here for you is the culmination of lots of specific information, specifically with regards to the definitions and the administration and with those two aspects, it's what came out of those discussions that we've been having over these past several months. They get laid right out in there, what is impervious service, what is the utility, what is, you know, what is the fee, how is it used, how often does it get assessed? What it's absent of is the specificity of what the amount would be and... be and the specificity of how frequently does it get assessed. What we, bylaw leaves open for this board to consider is at least once per year, but not more than four times per year. It's pretty straightforward. This was sent to council as well as to the board for review. I've received no comments back on it. We can make it available for comment or for those who may have questions tonight. We can certainly try to address those. And I guess at this point, in summary, I'd look to the board. If you have specific questions, we can use that as a starting point.
I read through it. I really didn't have any questions that concerned what was there. I mean, it was nothing different than what we had talked about the past two meetings, really, you know, two other public hearings we had, so.
And I'm in the same boat there. Yep. I mean, I don't have anything. It was pretty straightforward, comparable to what we spoke about the last two. Right. Joe, we may want to, as I said, that there were some questions at a Citizen Speak a couple of weeks ago by Marvin Gordon, that if we could just kind of address, I know you did address that-
Sure, sure. I have no problem revisiting. I believe those are the last two comments that may have still been not necessarily concluded at the last hearing. The first being, there was some question raised, might there be some sort of, the thought might have been federal money, but let's just leave it, was there some sort of grant money available to implement some of these stormwater provisions? And we've canvassed, you know, it's one of our jobs, we do very carefully, we canvass and looking for the money. The only thing that even came close to it was there was some federal money available targeted specifically to the Upper Charles River Basin under the earlier permit, not even this new permit. There is, that program didn't go any further than the one-time funding, and there are no other funds available to any other communities. So that was question one. I think it was from the same person. The second question was, so what about gravel driveways? You know, were these considered impervious area calculation and was that in fact an appropriate thing to do? I think was the two-part question. And I thought that perhaps they were included in the calculation as impervious, but I wasn't certain. But I've since confirmed that in fact, the gravel driveways in all gravel surfaces were in fact counted as impervious. Gravel, not all gravel is the same. You know, gravel that is properly designed and properly built and properly maintained has some enhanced ability to be passing water to some extent, but not a hundred percent. It's certainly better than paved roadway and paved driveway. But to that extent, without actually having a verifiable program of just how permeable or impervious it might be, all gravel driveways were in fact counted as impervious. And in fact, under the definitions, the definition of impervious includes exactly that provision that speaks to the gravel, as well as other things, but speaks to the gravel, makes it clear, lays it right out. I believe those were the only-
I think so, yeah.
-two questions that came out of the last meeting that were still open.
Do you want to put it up? Yeah, I think so. At this time, if we don't have anything more, I'd like to open it up to the public for any comments.
Unfortunately, I guess they have not seen these regulations because they're still in draft form. But maybe we could get these posted on our website so that people can see them at least. I mean, there's nothing in them that's mysterious or different than what we had talked about, but.
Absolutely. We can post them and we should. We'll do that through the administrator's office first thing tomorrow morning. I don't mind saying that, you know, MIPC did a very good job in looking at the New England area, looking beyond the New England area, what do other towns do, what are included. And more importantly, looked at the process that we've gone through in formulating this. And, you know, I bleed red ink sometimes when I'm reviewing a document. And I only made one editorial rotation, which in the end, I thought was harmless leaving in and was only on grammar alone. So they did a great job. Martin and his staff did a fabulous job putting this together for us. But I would hope that people who read it, you know, locally here have walked away with the same conclusion.
And the regulations do, for anybody out there, leave open and the possibility of having a future credit program within the town?
It does. It absolutely does.
Which we said we will look at and try and figure out what other towns are doing that have stormwater utilities and-
It does. It does exactly that. The other thing that this regulation does that came out very, ever so briefly in our discussions was the appeal process, that this can't be a say-all, end-all type of proposition, that if someone feels aggrieved by this, there's a process. And it's spelled right out, you know, citing state law procedures of how that appeal is heard. So that whole provision's been added. And so that may be new detail, but, you know, certainly it speaks to the famous question that was raised in an early part of the hearing.
Okay, well, now that I've opened up the public comment period, anyone who's out there in the audience that wishes to come up and speak?
I just have a question.
Could you come up to the microphone, Dr. Shae, because otherwise TV, they won't be able to hear you.
Mr. Lynch said he did not get any-
Bad comments on the regulations. Who were they available to? Were they available to the general public?
Until they were opened up in the hearing this evening, we could not do that. So that's what we're going to do tomorrow. We're going to post them and make them available. So prior to that, July 12th meeting, correct?
Okay, so there hasn't been a chance to make any negative comments?
No, but this was internal review, you know, town council and Board of Selectmen review. I'm sorry, thank you.
And my next question is, you've been cleaning out the basins, et cetera, even now before this goes into-
Been doing that for years.
My right go, my right?
We have been doing those.
Where does that stuff go?
That stockpile that our yard, and from there it gets taken from our yard and depending on the classification, can either go to a recomposting area, it can go to landfill daily cover, it can go to, the real bad stuff could go to asphalt plant, but none of our stuff needed to go there.
So it's stored in the-
In the yard.
In the yard?
Yeah.
That's contaminated stuff?
Oh, it's not. No, it's not. I mean, some of it can be. And we tested it. And prior to disposing, we just disposed fifty-four hundred tons of it just over the past couple of weeks. It's all manifested under DEP Solid Waste Disposal Regulations. And we get all the reports back and to prove that it's-
So some of it is contaminated?
No, no. Some of it just is not, if it's got enough, like if you sweep in the business districts and has litter mixed in it, it's not suitable for composting, even though it may perfectly be well organic-rich content. You could use for composting. You just can't because of the litter and it takes away the marketability.
Okay, so everything we get out of this basin, this whole project, it's not for contaminated water or runoff?
Don't follow the question. So, we sweep streets and we clean catch basins, and those result in solid materials coming out-
Right.
-which need to be categorized, classified, which will then determine how it is you handle and how it is you dispose of them.
And you do that now?
We've been doing cleaning catch basins and sweeping streets since forever.
It's amazing that none of it is contaminated. I can't believe it. That's terrific.
We are-
That is terrific, that none of that is contaminated and you can store it in the DPW among neighbors who live near there, et cetera.
It is-
That's amazing. That's positively amazing that you can come up with that. Maybe there's a bigger job nationwide that you could look into if you can achieve something like that. I find that amazing.
We have test results and manifests available for you to look at if you care to.
Yeah. I'd like to see that.
I appreciate the comments. Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak during this public comment period? Okay, seeing that there isn't anyone else, we're going to close the public hearing now. And we're going to move on.
Oh, you're going to continue the public hearing?
I'm sorry, continue the public hearing until July 12th. I apologize.
Sorry, sorry.
No, thank you.
I will second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks, Martin.
Got a little bit ahead of ourselves there. That's okay, though. Okay, item number seven on the agenda is another public hearing. On the Plate, liquor and common vic license, licenses. And with us, we have owner Suzanne Lombardi and attorney-
Bob is traveling, so I'm solo.
Okay, come on up. How are you tonight, Suzanne?
Great, thank you. Suzanne Lombardi, owner of the Plate at Central Ave and the Milton Marketplace.
So the Plate at Milton Marketplace has submitted an application for a liquor license as well as an amended common vic license to extend its hours. Suzanne, would you like to walk us through a little bit of what you're looking to accomplish?
I guess the additional hours for the vic license is really just hours that we were always zoned for. We have no plans yet to extend hours beyond what we're doing right now, which is five o'clock Tuesday through Saturday and three PM on Sundays. But since I'm here and before you guys, Attorney Sheffield just recommended that we get that business done.
Sure, that makes sense.
Yeah, okay.
So basically, it'll be, what is it, nine o'clock at night?
Six thirty to nine. The nine o'clock has always been on the books, I believe, for that building.
Yeah.
And we went and had early six thirty AM extension when we had planned the concept for the plate up at that space.
And for the liquor, what were you guys suggesting? You know, Mass Law prohibits, obviously, anything between two AM and eight AM sale of liquor on premise. And it's ten AM, after ten AM on Sundays.
Sure. Well, Sunday brunch at the Plate currently and will stay at a ten AM open. We just run brunch through three PM. And those hours right now, we have no plans to change. Lunchtime, you know, when we went before the board before, discussing our plan for the liquor license, again, there is no freestanding bar in that space. It's really just, we'll have the addition of some local, hopefully local, craft beer, a few choices for wine, just to enhance the food that's currently on the menu.
But this license is not limited to beer and wine, though. It's going to be a full license, correct?
It is a full license, yes. It's my understanding that all licensed in Milton are-
Unless we restrict them, yes. Yeah.
Right.
Okay. I had one, and maybe you could just help me through it. See if I can find it again. Fortunately, I don't have a mouse and it's driving me insane. I was looking at the, no, I can't find it. It's not in the package. The common, there was a narrative on the common vic, let me, I don't have it open, that referenced the Board of Appeals decision. And the seating, the way that the number of seats was in there was just very strangely worded. It started out saying that the seating capacity is sixty-eight, and then the next sentence was it could not go between, or it would remain between sixty and seventy. And the-
That has been revised, Mr. Hurley, in your votes tonight, and it just goes, it's now just at seventy.
Just at seventy.
That was what was approved in the special permit. And so we put it at the number that was approved in the special permit.
Okay.
I think in previous discussions with Ms. Lombardi at Board of Selectmen's meetings, there was discussion about sixty-eight seats.
Yeah, I was always under the impression that it was sixty-eight. If it's seventy.
Yeah, the way the, and again, I didn't see the actual decision of the Board of Appeals, but I was reading the excerpts from it, and it did say it at sixty-eight. Well, it very strangely worded, but appeared to be at sixty-eight. And that became part of the common vic license.
According to your licensing agent, the maximum seating capacity is seventy, as authorized by the Board of Appeals in their November twelfth, two thousand and fourteen decision. Can I look into that for you?
Yeah, I don't know if I can get my thing open quickly. No, I probably can't. I don't want to hold this up.
Yeah, and so, related to hours for sale of alcohol, are you, were you suggesting that you'd like to sell on Sunday at ten AM, beginning of brunch? You know, I thought about this a little bit. I don't know what my colleague over for discussion here. I was going to suggest maybe eleven AM on Sunday and twelve PM on any other day?
We start serving lunch at eleven AM right now.
Mm-hmm.
And there are people who are ready to eat lunch at eleven. So it, I would just say, from an operational point of view, that may be confusing because we do a very fast-paced lunch in both locations. So for us to kind of stop and look at the clock, it might be challenging. If that's a restriction-
No, I understand that. I just wanted, I wanted to have some dialogue about this and-
Sure.
-find out exactly why that would work. And, you know, we understand it's not a bar. It's not like you're going in and-
Right.
-and sitting down. And it's typically a casual drink along with either lunch or with brunch, whether it be a mimosa or a Bloody Mary or something of that sort.
Sure, that-
On Sunday, though, is it just brunch? I mean-
It's just brunch. We run just one shift right now.
Yeah, so there is no lunch. It's one.
Correct, yeah.
Starting at ten o'clock?
Ten to three.
Gotcha.
Okay. So you'd have, if you set it at eleven, you'd have people-
Yeah, that, right, exactly.
-who might, but I've seen restaurants work that way, that certainly, that, you know, you'd get there early for brunch and you can't have your mimosa and, you know, you'll wait till whatever the time is, but.
It's a short, that brunch is a short window. It's not unusual, you know, a lot of the other local area restaurants run that same sort of short brunch. They roll into dinner on Sundays. We don't have plans currently for that. From what I understand, you know, we may not actually see our liquor license if it's approved until August. So, you know, we don't have anything right now on the books really set, other than, you know, it would be a great thing to offer our customers, that we don't currently.
Yeah, I'm just looking for a good explanation and dialogue as to why it would benefit both your consumers and your business. So, to work with you here. And I think that, you know, obviously knowing your restaurant, it's not like people are sitting there for hours.
No, it's, it really is, it's quick. And, you know, right now, our lunch is, you know, busy and tends to slow down a little bit at two o'clock, two thirty. You know, I, we're new up there. And so as a business owner, I don't like the idea of playing around too much with hours and when we start serving and when we don't. It just tends to confuse people, especially as we're trying to build a new clientele in that location. The Central Ave location has been there for four years, and we do have a known brand in town. But we have been open six months and we really are, you know, seeing that even though we're just a ten-minute ride from that location, we are, you know, we are working hard to build a client, a new clientele over at the marketplace. So just, you know, it would be just a nice added benefit to what we're doing already. And again, it's so set in stone that we start serving lunch at eleven. We do a quick takeout still up there as well as, you know, seat diners as well. And the only thing I would say is a lot of our, you know, a lot of our takeout does really do, does happen early at eleven, eleven-thirty.
Then I would, I would suggest, related to the alcohol, that it be eleven AM for lunch, but ten AM only on Sunday for brunch?
That's great.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I think that, that makes sense. So your breakfast wouldn't add alcohol.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add, I did speak with Ms. Conlon today regarding this liquor license, and she was in full support of issuing this liquor license, and she had no questions regarding the regulations outlined.
Great, great. Okay, well, we have a motion before us.
Uh, hang on, let me get back there. Get that stupid thing working.
Mr. Chairman, again, if I could add, under number four, you would have-
Mr. Chairman, again, if I could add, under number four, you would have to add the hours that you're going to approve for the liquor license. Because we didn't know when we created the conditions, so you'll have to add that in.
Yeah, I did find that document I was talking about, and that document was the proposed conditions on the common vic license, it says the seating capacity is sixty-eight.
And it has been changed.
That has been changed.
Yes.
And, and the, the special permit was very specific that it was not to exceed seventy, is that what it was?
Correct.
Correct.
Don't ever forget that place again.
We're working without our most tonight, so be with us. These are a little sensitive.
There's the motion here, and number four is where you have to add the time.
Yes. Okay, I'd rather read it here. Okay, so I'll propose a motion to grant a liquor license to Lombardi Enterprises LLC DBA, the plate, to expose, keep for sale, and to sell alcoholic beverages to be consumed on the premises by members and guests contingent upon the applicant's agreement to the following conditions required by the town as amended, as amended by Selectman Hurley, and contingent upon legislative approval of the home rule petition. Let's say approval of the home rule petition and the ABCC. There has been legislative approval of the home rule petition. Let's start this again.
This is what you were saying?
So, I'd like to propose a motion to grant a liquor license to Lombardi Enterprises LLC DBA, the plate, to expose, keep for sale, and sell alcoholic beverages to be consumed on the premises by members, guests, contingent upon the applicant's agreement to follow the conditions required by the town, and contingent upon approval of the ABCC. Number one, hours of operations. Hours of operations must be consistent with the common vic's license. No alcoholic beverages shall be sold or served on the premises to be consumed on premises. No alcohol shall be sold, delivered, or otherwise permitted to be taken out or delivery service of food. The maximum seating capacity is seventy, as authorized by the Board of Appeals in their decision dated November twelfth, two thousand fourteen. Meal service must be available when alcohol is being served, and a maximum of two alcoholic beverages may be served to a patron in any area of the restaurant prior to service of a meal. Service of alcohol is number four. State law does not allow the sale of alcoholic on a section, the sale of alcohol on a section twelve between the hours of two AM and eight AM on weekdays, and between two AM and ten AM on Sundays. The local licensing authority, the Board of Selectmen, will determine the hours. Again, this isn't so poorly worded. So, I'm gonna paraphrase in here.
That's what you're adding, the hours, Mr. Hurley?
Yeah, yeah. So, the, the hours of operation, the hours of service of alcohol will be from eleven AM on, let's see, Monday through Saturday, eleven AM to, is it nine PM that's closing?
Correct.
To nine PM. And on Sunday, from, from ten AM to nine.
To three PM.
To three PM.
Three PM? Okay.
Um, can I just, so we are doing brunch from ten to three, but are, we are.
So it could be zero up until six?
Yeah, so ten AM then to six PM.
Six PM, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Yes. Employee training, number five. Licensee must participate in a program designed to train employees in methods of observation and detection to avoid serving or selling alcohol to intoxicated persons or to minors. All employees, whether full or part-time or occasional, who engage in the sale, pouring, or service of alcohol shall, within thirty days of their employment, be required to participate in and receive certification by one of the following training programs. And training for intervention procedures by service of alcohol tips, alcohol intervention methods, ALM, or other training provided by a certified trainer or approved by the Board of Selectmen. Employees shall be recertified by the approved training program or in-house trainer at intervals of no more than three years. Licensee must maintain a file containing copies of current certification records for all employees engaged in the sale, pouring, or service of alcohol. The sale, the files shall be available for examination upon the request of the Milton Board of Selectmen or the Milton Police Department. Six, sale of alcoholic beverages. The sale of alcoholic beverages at reduced prices, discount prices during specified times, including without limitation happy hours, and two for the price of one specials is expressly prohibited. The sale of alcoholic beverages in pictures is prohibited. Seven, management supervision. The owner, or in the case of a corporation or a limited liability company, the manager of the licensed premises or his designee shall be present on the premises at all time during which alcoholic beverages are sold. The name and address of each individual referred to in the preceding sentence shall be provided to the Board of Selectmen and the Chief of Police. Number eight, designated locations for sale of alcoholic beverage. The sale and/or service of alcoholic beverage is prohibited in any area not licensed by the Board of Selectmen, and no change in such area or location shall be made without approval of the Board of Selectmen unless, and unless shown on an amended plan. Number nine, no entity to hold more than one license. No individual partnership, corporation, or limited liability company shall be issued more than one license. Number ten, only one license per premises. No more than one alcoholic license may be exercised on the same premises at the same time. Eleven, records. The licensee shall maintain a file containing copies of the current certification records for all employees engaged in the sale, pouring, or service of alcohol. The file should be provided, should be available for examination upon request of the Milton Board of Selectmen and the Milton Police Department. Number ten, failure to comply with license, failure to comply license revocation. Failure to comply with the requirements of this license, including but not limited to the sale or service of alcohol by an uncertified employee with more than thirty days of service, may result in a public hearing to determine whether the licensee's license should be suspended, revoked, or subject to any other sanction permitted by law. Smoking, no smoking is permitted in the restaurant. Fourteen, lottery and quino, there shall be no lottery or quino sales. So that is the liquor license.
Okay, and so before I second the motion, I wanna read into the record a letter that was sent to the Board of Selectmen today by Natalie Foltz. I read the notice in the Milton, excuse me, I read the notice in the Milton Times that there will be a hearing on June twenty-second, two thousand sixteen at seven PM at the Milton Council on Aging upon the request of Lombardi Enterprises LLC doing business as the plate for the purpose of considering a liquor license to expose, keep for sale, and sell alcoholic beverages to be consumed on the premise by patrons. I called the Selectmen's office today to inquire if the license was for, quote, "the plate," unquote, or for Lombardi Enterprises LLC, and was advised that this would be discussed at the meeting. I was also told that a request for longer hours would be discussed. How can this be discussed if it were not listed in the notice of the meeting? If the license is issued, will it be for the plate only, or will Lombardi Enterprises LLC be able to use it for other establishments? The plate is open from six thirty AM and closes at three PM. When is the liquor going to be sold or consumed? Will it be sold from noon to three PM? If the liquor is served during the time that you have the business people having lunch, will there be a limit as to the amount of liquor allowed from each patron? Mr. Chan will be already, Mr. Chan has already applied for a liquor license for his new restaurant and bar. East Milton does not need another liquor license. I would hope the board will give careful consideration to Lombardi Enterprises LLC. So, a motion was made?
Yeah, and I should say, we haven't opened this up to the public to see if they have any questions, but can you answer, I guess, that?
Yeah.
In terms of, the license is issued to a location, not a person, per se. It is transferable to another entity, but with the approval of Board of Selectmen, but not another location. So it cannot, even though the plate has the license, the license is specific to that location, it can't even be used by the plate at their other location. So it's specific to that one location.
And I should open it up for public comment, if there is any, from anybody in the audience. Could you come up and announce yourself, please?
Good evening, my name is Peter Dunn, I live on Franklin Street. I'm here, I'm a member of the Board for the East Milton Neighborhood Association, and it's Vice President. We're in favor of the application by the plate. Suzanne and her husband live in the neighborhood. We've seen very responsible and responsive ownership over the last six months, and we're happy to see them in the neighborhood and have this application approved within the footprint that was described during your presentation.
Great, great.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I have one quick question, Tom, just with regard to Sunday. We do have, we, our hours are through nine o'clock on Sunday if we want them? With the common vic?
How they are. I thought they were limited to six on Sundays. Again, maybe I'm looking at that proposed common vic.
Yeah, what I looked at was from the Board of Appeals in November twelfth, two thousand fourteen, where it said it would be open from six thirty to six PM on Sundays.
Yeah.
So that's what we're approved for?
Yes.
Correct.
That appears to be it.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Would anybody else like to speak during the public comment portion? Seeing that there is none, we have a motion before us that has been made. I will second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Lombardi.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
You have the common vic license.
I have to.
Yep.
Oh, okay, I think I'm staying.
Hang on one second, we have.
Continue reading.
Another motion, yeah.
Okay, so I will propose a motion to grant a common vicular license to Lombardi Enterprises LLC DBA, the plate, contingent upon the applicant's agreement to the following conditions required by the town. Hours of operation, Board of Appeal, the Board of Appeals had it November twelfth, two thousand fourteen. Public hearing approved the hours of the plate at the marketplace, Milton Marketplace, to open and operate at six thirty AM, seven days a week and holidays, and to remain open until nine PM on Monday through Saturday, and to open from six thirty AM to six PM on Sunday. Seating capacity, the maximum seating capacity is seven, as authorized by the Board of Appeals in their decision dated November twelfth, two thousand fourteen. State and local law compliance. The license holder will comply with all federal, state, and local laws and regulations. Governmental authorities authorized to review for compliance with applicable laws and regulations shall be afforded access during hours of operation. This includes, but is not limited to, members and employees of the Milton Board of Health, Inspection Service Department, Police Department, Fire Department, Town Administrator, and Board of Selectmen. Noise, music, and entertainment. Noise levels, including television sounds, if applicable, inside the restaurant, will be controlled and moderated such that they do not unreasonably disturb neighbors and adjacent businesses. Music, if any, shall be quiet background type. Live entertainment is not permitted. Five, floor plan. The sale of food and alcohol is limited to the interior of the restaurant as shown on the submitted plans and the five hundred square foot patio area as noted on the liquor license application when and if the proper permit has been approved and received by the local authorities. Six, refuge location and removal. The restaurant shall continue to follow all regulations and requirements of the Milton Board of Health pertaining to the location and removal of refuge, and shall at all, shall at all times take appropriate steps to eliminate unreasonable odors and other problems that would tend to be a disturbance to the other businesses or neighbors. Seven, smoking. Smoking is not permitted in the restaurant or within the area of the building located at ten Bassett Street. And number eight, lottery and quino, there will be no lottery or quino sales.
So again, I'll open it up to the public for a comment related to the common vic. Seeing as there is no comment, motion that's been made before us, I will second. Any discussion?
None.
Seeing that there is none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you again, thanks very much.
Thank you Suzanne.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Okay, item number eight is a public hearing on five forty-five Adams Street lit sign. Dunkin' Donuts at five forty-five Adams Street submitted a request to alter the logo on the lit sign on Granite Avenue, as well as change the lettering in front of the vestibule on Adams Street.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. If you could state your name, please, welcome.
My name is George Delagus, I'm an architect, and I represent the owner of the store. And with me I have Sean Donovan, who is with Viewpoint Sign, just in case there are any, he happens to be our vendor for signage in general. If there are any specific technical questions regarding the signage, he'd be, you know, would be happy to answer those as well.
Thank you.
I believe there's a PowerPoint presentation, although I actually have brought, brought a handout of the PowerPoint presentation.
Okay, great.
If you prefer. And I also have drawings, full-scale drawings of just the seminar we made, with the elevations, you know, and so on.
Okay, great.
I can do either. Are you gonna run it, Bill?
Yeah, we're getting them both, I guess. Thank you.
So this is exactly, pardon me.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. So the PowerPoint presentation.
Yes.
Bring your pointer, but I have a scale. This one shows the existing building as it stands right now. On the upper left-hand corner, you can see the front of the building, which shows the signage, the right side with the duck and on it. And again, that's existing, that's not an illuminated sign, obviously. Then to the right, we have the rear of the building, there's also an existing, another existing sign, this has been the day of listing, in the evening, which is lit. And that's illuminated, it's part of that vestibule and canopy. We have two entrances. I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes. I actually, yeah, the public.
Should I sit down?
If you could take that with you, that would be helpful, thank you. Sorry for the inconvenience.
Sorry. So in the rear, we have additional sign, which is illuminated. In addition to that, we have in, on the, from the back entrance, side entrance to the side, we have a pylon sign, which is shown here, with the duck and on its image on it as well. If you can go to the next one. So this is the front, this is a comparison of the existing versus what we are proposing. And basically, we're proposing leaving the front vestibule and canopy as it is. The previous submission we gave to you made a small change, which was to infill the corners here with glass, and therefore to be able to put a larger sign on it. We backtrack from that, we decided to leave it the way it is.
So you're moving it from a lit sign to a technically non-lit sign?
Actually, it's actually, we're moving it to, this is a non-lit.
Oh, they're both non-lit, okay.
They're both non-lit, we're actually putting in vinyl, we're putting an image on the glass instead. We think it's nicer. We think, yeah, also according to the sign committee, they didn't think that really qualifies as a sign to begin with, but we wanna make sure you're okay with it. And therefore, we are, we think it's gonna look nicer, because the vestibule glows, we have a globe light even currently, and it sort of glows, and we think it's more elegant and much more appropriate, you know, as far as the sign. We were originally, I intended to come to you to ask for an eternally illuminated sign. I think this is a better option, frankly, and even more attractive. I think this is a better option, frankly, and even more attractive. Uh, other than that, you can see, you know, we're removing the awnings, uh, from the front, I think it'll be, it'll look very attractive. Uh, on the sides at the front, uh, we plan to landscape, but it's not, you know, we didn't wanna discuss this, uh, today necessarily, but we apparently had, uh, there's an issue with trash being thrown by customers as they come out the door, so we're planning to add a trash receptacle right outside.
Yeah, and, and, and I'm glad you mentioned that, you know, and, and I think a lot of the businesses are taking, um, you know, uh, they're really taking a lot of pride in, um, in the facade, you know, of each of their businesses, and I think that if it could be, um, you know, part of their daily routine to also, um, go out and, and look...
And also clean it up, yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be very helpful.
I mean, I, I don't have control over it with the operations manager, it does, but I know him, because I'm actually the in-house architect, so I have a daily contact with him, so I'll mention that. The issue of the trash in front is, is something that, you know, that's really, I, that I didn't realize, we didn't realize, and I don't think the owner knows, knew either, but that's something we wanna take care of, because we want, you know, both entrances to look neat and clean, and obviously, we'll need to do the same in the back as well.
Yeah, that's something I would like, um, written into this...
Sure.
Uh, if possible, thanks.
So if you can go to the ne- I, I'm sorry, uh, uh, before we go any further, you can see what we've done here, we, we've actually added banners on the side. I mean, this is obviously not, not, uh, illegal necessarily, but others have done it, we don't intend to do this. Uh, we do wanna add a little bit of, of signage on the side, this probably had a cup, because you really cannot see the, the front of the building, because there's a tree there as well. You know, this tree is really in the way, especially with, with foliage on, with the foliage on it, and it's difficult to, uh, to see the sign, so we hope this si- this option, this sign will be visible. We, we haven't done it before. Our signage, uh, company is telling us that, you know, that the sign will be visible, which is, you know, which is what we would like to see. Uh, this is the interior of the vestibule, you can see, uh, there's a globe, there's a light, we will replace it with something similar, the idea is to give it a bit of a glow, uh, to be able to both light the sign and to also light the, uh, the vestibule and handi- and handicap ramp area. So that basically stays the same, so the le- level of lighting we have right now, which is fairly subdued, is pretty much what we're trying to keep.
And that lighting will be turned off at, at...
Correct. You have everything, everything shut down. Uh, this is, yeah, this is a, a, a computer, uh, image we kind of put together. Uh, this was intended with the previous design, where we light in the front. In, in fact, we won't be lighting, uh, we're gonna be, uh, filling in the glass here, so the sign is actu- actually smaller. Uh, so, you know, you get the smaller signage, we prefer to make it larger, but we decided to not, to not make that change, so this gives you an image of, like, what you may look at night. Uh, the, these are, these are, uh, regarding the, uh, pylon sign in the back, it remains exactly the same, all we're doing is, is to reface it, and that's the, that's the existing, and this is the proposed, they're pretty much the same. The reason we have to do it is because Duckett Donuts is requiring us to, uh, uh, update and upgrade the sign, and the only difference is we have a cup. Here it says Duckett Donuts, and here it says D D. But, you know, we have, we have to do it, but other than that, there's no, there's no difference. Sign stays the same size, same height, everything's the same.
Okay.
Yeah, these are the elevations that, uh, I have, the updated ones, but it, it shows exactly what I was talking about. Uh, there's the, uh, there's the front. Uh, well, one thing I didn't mention is that the signage in the rear of the building, uh, will be removed. There will not be any sign at all.
So it'd just be the pylon sign outside?
Exactly, if you don't mind, uh, backing up. Uh, i- i- yeah, it is there, yeah, I just thought you'd say the image, but yeah, uh, there's nothing, because we're, we're putting in a, a walk-in cooler freezer, and plus, really, we, we really don't have a need for that sign, we have the pylon sign, someone comes in, they know, uh, uh, where they are.
So they'll be, they'll be freezer out back, and then the, the entrance door will...
Entrance will be on the left, correct.
Yeah.
The door goes from the middle to the two doors on the side, the one on the left enters, the other one enters, you, you're walking.
Correct, uh, yeah, well, they wa- they are, they're one, they're, one of the right actually enters into the building, the walk-in is actually access from within the building.
Okay.
But, but that is the ex, that is the service, uh...
Access, yeah.
Uh, access, yeah, correct. Uh, this one, we, we won't use, this is on the drive-through side. Uh, we, uh, we're using it, we're using it currently, we don't wanna use it, it's not a great location for a service, uh, door. And we're also removing, there's a drive-through canopy here as well, which is missing, you can see, we wanna remove that as well. I mean, we don't have a drive-through, but...
Yeah.
There's no reason to keep the canopy. That's about it, and, and I have, I have these drawings, uh, I have hard copies if you like, um, for the record, to make sure you have them all up-to-date drawings. And, uh, if you have any questions?
Yeah, I guess we could open it up now.
Can I, before we open it up, can I just ask, uh, John Ziegwick is here...
Oh, sure, absolutely.
...the Sign Review Committee.
Yeah, thank you.
John, could you just come up and, um, 'cause I know this came before you, before it came to us, so, um, I'd just like your thoughts.
Well, this is different than what was presented to us.
Okay, smaller in scale?
Uh, no, it's maintaining more of the existing entrance. We were shown...
Okay.
A different...
In the front?
A different design.
It was wider than...
We were showing this one.
Okay.
Which is what I've shown, which is, uh, which is, uh, wider.
I, the, the concept's the same, they're using the window decals still, but you're just putting glass in the existing entrance now, instead of redoing the whole front.
Well, yeah, right, uh, what we're, we're doing, I kind of, do it, so like you're sitting down, it's basically, uh, the, uh, this is the existing, this is the existing, we were going to fill this in with glass...
Mm-hmm.
And therefore get a larger sign.
Right.
Instead, we're leaving it in a sign smaller.
But you're making it all glass?
We're making it all ba- uh, it's all glass, which is where it is now, which is where it was gonna be when we...
Right, and you're paying it...
Reposed it to you originally.
Right. So the, the concept's the same, it's just, it's a different look than what we were showing.
Mm-hmm.
And you're switching up the red color with, with white?
Correct. There, there's also purple in the building, which where we are, you know, the win- the windows...
Yeah, you're taking off the awnings.
Yeah, we're taking off the, the awnings as well.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I, I can give you, I, I can tell you what the square footage, uh, the square footage is in terms of signage. Uh, the, the existing sign, which is the white sign, you know, front is thirty, uh, thirteen square feet. The proposed is ten, it's actually less, that excludes the side, the little cup on the side, that's only ten square feet.
Okay.
Allowable is thirteen point six, so we are well below, below the, uh, allowable square footage.
Yeah, actually, the, the cup will, the cup that they show us here will be smaller on that...
Correct.
On the redesign.
Correct.
Okay.
But we liked that they used the, uh, that they switched, they went to the window decals instead of the internally illuminated signs.
Yeah, I agree.
They eliminated those lit signs, and then the, the pylon was, had, we had already approved that in the past for the lighting, and they just changed out the face, so...
Yeah, yeah.
That was pretty simple. So we were, uh, I think you probably received my write-up, so...
Yes.
Yeah, we didn't have any, we were happy that they went back and changed it, and, uh, approved it.
Great. Thank you, John.
Thank you, John, appreciate it.
Sure.
Planning we couldn't have somebody here tonight, um... They were here for another meeting, but they couldn't come tonight, they have a meeting tomorrow night. Um, they've reviewed this, and they're in support of it.
Uh, I think at this time then I'll open it up, any public comments?
Mister, Mister Chairman, if I could add, um, I did speak with Ms. Conlon today regarding the sign, and she's in full support of the sign.
Okay, seeing that there aren't any comments, um, we motion?
I'll propose a motion, um, upon the application submitted by David Rhonda, and on behalf of the, um, Mildon Realty LLC, for three vinyl signs to be attached to the glass atrium, uh, at the front of the building of five forty-five Adams Street, Milton, uh, to be illuminated by a light in the atrium, uh, and for the replacement of an existing illuminated pylon sign at the entrance of the building's parking lot on Granite Avenue. How's this, where's this read? The Board of Selectmen hereby determine that, uh, the applicant has demonstrated, uh, that there is a reasonable need for the sign. Uh, the applicant operates a business, Dunkin' Donuts at five forty-five Adams Street. Uh, the address, uh, is located in a business district. Uh, the business has a walk-up entrance, a, and a driveway entrance on Adams Street, as well as a vehicular entrance on Granite Avenue, uh, where the existing pylon sign is located. Uh, there is a reasonable basis for exempting, uh, the sign from the applicable standards, the business operates, uh, from five A M. to ten P M., so illumination is necessary for patrons to see the signs. Uh, the front, the front wall sign and the double-sided pylon sign are substantially replacements of, for existing signs. The pylon sign will be the same size and composition, with the exception of a slight change in the coffee cup logo. The exemption for, uh, the proposed sign from such standards will not have a substantial detrimental effect on the community. The new sign, signs are largely replacement of the existing signs, and the total air of the sign is reduced compared to the existing condition. Uh, the building is located entirely in the business district, and each of the illuminated faces of the pylon face sign, um, face other business district properties. Uh, in accordance with section two, uh, section three C five of the Milton zoning bylaws, the Board of Selectmen hereby, uh, issue, uh, the permit for the proposed sign upon the following conditions. One, the design, lettering and illumination of the sign shall conform with the pictures and specifications submitted with the application, uh, copies of which are attached hereto and incorporated, um, by reference. Now, that's slightly changed, right, so we probably should refer to the, the slightly change. I mean, the application submitted a, a larger sign, actually.
No, you have, you have that sign.
Okay. We, and that's the one on the application?
The sign that's attached to this is that sign.
Now, okay, number two, the sign shall be illuminated, uh, only on days when Dunkin' Donuts is open for business. Illumination of the sign shall cease no later than fifteen minutes after the close of business each day, uh, that Dunkin' Donuts, uh, is open for business. For violation of any condition of this permit, which is not cured within a time satisfactory to the Board of Selectmen, shall be a basis for modification, amendment or termination of this permit by the Board of Selectmen. Uh, number five, the permit shall expire if Dunkin' Donuts ceases to occupy the building at five forty-five Adams Street, Milton, or if Mildon Realty LLC ceases to operate the business of Dunkin' Donuts at five forty-five Adams Street, Milton.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion?
Nope.
You wanna add in number six? About the barrel?
Mister Chairman, we wanted to...
Yeah, you're right. So I, I'd like to, uh, add in number six related to, um, uh, trash removal, uh, in front of the, having a barrel in front of the building, and then also having the employees, um, as part of their operational plan, monitor, um, the trash out in front of the, of the building.
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment. Um, I mean, it, this is a sign permit application, that's really not a sign issue.
They're going to, they're going to, um, landscape the front of the building, within the landscaping, we'll put the barrel as part of the landscaping.
Great. I guess my question is, I mean, I have no problem with it as a friendly amendment, but it, but it really has nothing to do with signage.
We will do it anyway.
Thank you. Okay, I'll second that motion. Uh, any further discussion?
Nope.
Seeing not, that there is none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like more documents, or leave any drawings? Uh, or more copies, or...
Maybe just one for the, um... Thank you. Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item number nine, a public hearing on three-ten Granite Avenue, a change in a signee. Uh, Super Petroleum at three-ten Granite Avenue submitted a request to change the name of its sign permit from Super Petroleum to Milton Super Service LLC. Changed the name of the auto care business from Milton Auto Care to Euro Auto House, and to get, we have with us, uh, Attorney Ned Corcoran and Mike, the business owner, welcome.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, and members of the board. Uh, for the record, Ned Corcoran here on behalf of Milton Super Service, um, LLC. Okay. Um, and, uh, with me is Mufta Bagazia, who is the, uh, owner of Milton Super Service LLC, and Super Petroleum Inc., which is the operating, uh, entity of the gas station. First, I wanna, uh, recognize the board for, um, diligent nego- um, efforts to conduct a really thorough hearing previously, and it was our mistake in terms of the filing of the initial application to make sure that the, that the proper entity was the applicant. And the applicant, in my mind, should be the owner of the property, uh, and therefore the owner of the physical, uh, sign structure, and that is Milton Super Service LLC. Uh, I have, um, a copy of the D and, uh, to the property, uh, to hand in, that demonstrates that, uh, when title was taken in twenty-fourteen, excuse me, last, um, April twenty-third of twenty-fifteen, it was taken in the name of Milton Super Service LLC as the grantee. Um, and that entity should be, uh, the entity that, that holds the, the permit. The second issue arose after the board, uh, prior hearing, and that dealt with, um, the securing of a new operating tenant for the, um, auto care component, and, uh, rather than Milton Auto Care, it is another entity known as Euro Auto House. Mufta sent me the photograph that you see there, um, which I shared immediately with Kathy Ferraro, Charlie Boyce, and others in the neighborhood, and asking for their comment. I know that Kathy is here, uh, and can comment on her own, but I did receive a positive email back from her, indicating... No other change, and in fact, um, that's, otherwise, as you see it, the top panel had been removed as proposed, um, and, uh, actually, the Super Petroleum panel mo- lowered, uh, interplace, uh, and the, uh, the S P Mart panel that was for the, uh, the, uh, the store, uh, is, had, was removed. And so it was all lowered by about three and a half feet. Um, and then, con- in conjunction with that, uh, the board had approved a white, um, awning, uh, with Milton Auto Care, but to be consistent with the auto Euro house, we're requesting that the board approve, um, a change in that...
To a black awning?
To a black awning with white lettering. And the three awnings that would be on the building would, are as shown here, one is the, uh, Euro Auto House, one is this S P Mart, um, red lettering, which was previously approved, uh, w- red awning with white lettering, uh, which is previously approved and would remain the same, and then there's an awning without lettering that is, that is over the windows, uh, of the store. And so, uh, with that, I would ask the, the board's, uh, support for, uh, these two, uh, amendments.
Yeah, I don't have any questions either, um, so... Like to open it up, uh, to the public, for anybody out there who would like to comment? John? Could you come up, John, do you mind? Thank you.
Uh, I just have one comment. This wasn't brought to our committee, but it seems to stay within the concept of what we originally approved for the signage. Uh, but as part of that approval, we had asked that all the window signs be removed, and when I was there, about a week and a half ago, that band that's in the windows, kinda shielding the sun, that's still there, and we talked about flipping it...
Right.
So it could still cover the product, but you wouldn't see the word, so I wanna make sure that gets...
Yeah, thank you for bringing it to our attention. Thank you, John.
Yeah, when I had, I had submitted this, um, to, um, Anne Marie and to Bill, uh, I had, if appropriate, I'd asked them to refer to the, um, the Sign Review Committee, I think they determined, they've just come before the board.
Okay. All right, so I'll propose a motion, um, upon the application submitted by Attorney Edward Corcoran, and on behalf of, um, Milton Super Service LLC, for approval of a freestanding illuminated sign located at the north-westly corner of the gas station property, located at three-ten Granite Avenue. The installation of individual panels on the sign structure, uh, for sign logos on individual pumps, uh, and canopy and honoring, awning lettering, uh, the Board of Selectmen hereby determines that the applicant has demonstrated, uh, A, there's a reasonable need for the proposed sign, the applicant operates a business, Super Petroleum at three-ten Av- uh, three-ten Granite Avenue, uh, the address is located in a business district, The address is located in a business district. The business has walk-up entrances and vehicular entrances on Granite Ave. and Wood Street. The existing pylon sign is located on the corner of Granite Avenue and Wood Street. There is a reasonable basis for exempting the proposed sign from the applicable standards. The business operates between 6:00 AM and 11:00 PM, so illumination is necessary for patrons to see the sign. The exemption of the proposed sign for such standards will not have a substantial detrimental effect upon the community. The remodel sign is largely a replacement of, for existing signs. The total area of signs is reduced compared to the existing conditions. The business is located entirely in a business district. In accordance with Section 3C5 of the Milton zoning bylaws, the Board of Selectmen hereby issue a permit for the proposed sign upon the following conditions. One, the freestanding illuminated sign will be lowered by three and one-half feet to a new total height of twelve and one-half feet. Two, the location of the freestanding illuminated sign shall be as previously permitted by the Planning Board's amended site plan approval dated June 9th, 2011. Two, A, the Super Petroleum top panel will be as agreed to with the Milton Sign Review Committee in 2014, namely, a solid aluminum panel, red in color with black lettering, silver in color stating Super Petroleum. The second panel will be unlit. The panel will be solid aluminum with lettering stating Euro Auto House. C, the third section is the LED price panels, as agreed to with the Milton Sign Review Committee in 2014, with heavy window tinting on the north side of the price numbers to protect the homeowner next door. The price panel numbers will be illuminated only enough to allow visibility of prices from the roadway and shall not be intrusive to the adjacent home. The bottom panel stating that the site is a state inspection station is allowed, but the panels shall be unlit at all times. Three, the freestanding illuminated sign and supporting structure shall be removed upon the sale of the property. Four, daily sign and pump illumination shall cease within fifteen minutes of the station's closing. Five, window signage shall not be allowed unless it has been received the prior approval of the building commissioner or other applicable town of Milton authority. Six, unlit, the unlit Super Petroleum lettering is allowed on the station's pump island canopy. Seven, unlit logos on the individual gas pumps stating Super Petroleum and a pump number are allowed. Number eight, lettering on the station's two unlit doorway awnings is allowed. A, the awning over the SP Mart entrance doorway shall be red with white lettering. And this is different. Yeah.
I think that should be SP Mart.
Yeah, over the, lettering SP Mart. The awning over the auto care entrance door shall be black with white lettering, and that should say Euro Auto House. Nine, violation of any condition of this permit, which is not cured within a time satisfactory to the Board of Selectmen, shall be the basis for modification, amendment, or termination of this permit by the Board of Selectmen. Ten, the permit shall expire if Milton Super Service LLC ceases to own the subject freestanding illuminated sign or if any of the subject businesses cease to operate at 310 Granite Ave., Milton.
I will second that motion. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Seeing that there isn't any, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're done.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And now, I have no voice left.
Okay, we're moving on to item number ten, which is approval for a reserve fund transfer request. I'm going to ask our town administrator, Anne Marie Fagan, to speak to this, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'm asking the board to approve and forward to the warrant committee a reserve fund transfer in the amount of $154,106 for the law budget. This is to cover unanticipated bills through May of 2016, so I still will be coming back to for another RFT for the June bills once I receive them in the first week of July.
Do you have an estimate of what the June bills might be?
I do not.
Do we know how much is in the reserve fund at this point?
I do not believe the reserve fund has been touched at all at this time. I don't think anyone has made any requests yet, so I think this will be the first request.
Okay. And the balance, other than the special amount we have in there for Henry's, what was the balance, do you remember?
I think it was $250.
$250?
Two or $250. But I can get you that amount tomorrow. The reason for the unanticipated increase in the law bills is due to the, their nursery issues that we've had to deal with this past year, the 40B projects, the one on Randolph Ave. and the one on 131 Elliott Street, and then the superseding order of conditions for 131 Elliott Street. So, those contributed to the increase in costs for our law budget for this year.
Okay. I'll propose a motion to approve and forward to the warrant committee a reserve fund transfer request in the amount of $154,106 to cover unanticipated law bills through May 2016.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion?
Nope.
Seeing that there's no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item number eleven is approval of three percent fund transfer request. I'm going to ask town administrator Anne Marie Fagan to speak to it, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As the board knows, the last two months of a fiscal year and the first fifteen days of the new fiscal year, a department can request what's called a three percent transfer between line items. So, you can request a three percent from your salary and wage down to your general expense or vice versa, general expense up to salary and wage. These three departments, your cemetery, your library, and your planning department, due to staffing changes in their department, had some additional monies left in their salary and wage line, and they are requesting to have a three percent transfer down to their general expense lines. The library was requesting the three percent in order to purchase additional books and material. The cemetery is looking to replace their barn roof, and the planning department is looking to secure some office supplies.
Okay. We have three motions before us.
Okay. I'll propose a motion to approve and forward to the warrant committee a transfer in the amount of $8,882.83 from the cemetery department's salary and wage line to the cemetery general expense line as requested by cemetery superintendent Teresa Desmond.
And I'll second that motion. Any further discussion?
I think the only, the only discussion I'd like, and not there's a problem with any of these, and they're all relatively small in amount anyways. But then, as a board, we should at least see that they're similar to a reserve fund transfer to make sure that departments just aren't using, just to use the money.
I agree.
That, you know, that there is a need, you know, demonstrate that there's a need for, for the funds being requested to be transferred. Because it is money that otherwise could wind up as free cash.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, seeing that there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
B, proposed motion to approve and forward to the warrant committee a transfer in the amount of $15,000 in the library department's salary and wage line to the library general expense line as requested by the library director, William Adamsak.
I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing that there is none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And making a motion to approve and forward to the warrant committee a transfer in the amount of $923 from the planning department's salary and wage line to the planning department's general expense line as requested by the director of planning and community development, William Clark.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item number twelve on the agenda is approval to authorize the chair to approve three percent in reserve fund transfer requests.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number thirteen is the approval of the extension of Henry's demolition deadline. I'd like to say that discussion with the Conleys on a mixed-use development will put on hold when the Conleys were denied their order of conditions from the conservation committee on their commission, excuse me, on their 40B project. That denial resulted in the Conleys filing an appeal with the DEP for a superseding order of conditions. The DEP decision took close to a year to be issued. Now that the Conleys have received their superseding order of conditions from the DEP, the town and the Conleys will resume discussions on a mixed-use development at 131 Elliott Street over the next couple of weeks. We have a motion in front of us.
Okay, so I make a motion to extend the deadline for concurrent demolition of the town-owned property at Zero Central Ave. and the Carrick Realty Trust property at 131 Elliott Street from June 30, 2016 to September 30, 2016.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? Seeing that there is none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item number fourteen is approval of the Southeastern Public Employees Association, SPEA, collective bargaining agreement. I'm going to ask town administrator Anne Marie Fagan to speak to this, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is the second successfully negotiated contract, the second of your seven union contracts. This is a three-year contract, fiscal '17, '18, '19. It's a two percent wage adjustment each year with a one percent twenty-year step in the third year, and the changes that the town was seeking in health insurance, which is the basis point swing in eighteen of two basis points and in nineteen of an additional two basis points. The one minor change to this bargaining union contract, we increased the hours of their lunch. They were at twelve to two, and it seemed more reasonable to have them from eleven to three for staffing issues in smaller offices.
It's just a, it's a one-hour unpaid lunch.
Yes, it's a, it's a one-hour unpaid lunch. They're not getting anything. We just extended the lunch hour for them in order to make the offices work.
More flexible and it's more effective and efficient.
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion in front of us?
Okay. I will move to approve a three-year contract with the Southeastern Public Employees Association effective July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2019.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion?
Nope.
Seeing that there is none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item fifteen is the approval and extension of easement granted to the town by the residents at Milton Landing. A twelve-year agreement between the town of Milton and Wharf Street LLC will expire in July. Wharf Street LLC is no longer the owner of the property, and therefore, an extension of the grant of easement must be signed with the new owner, Milton Landing Condominium Trust. The proposed agreement is for a one-year extension until a long-term agreement is reached. And town administrator Anne Marie Fagan, would you like to add anything to that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As you stated, this is an easement, a twelve-year easement that expires in July of 2016. It is the section down in the wharf where you are able to store the boats and get to the water access. And the Milton Landing, I'm sorry, the wharf residents of Milton Landing are the new trustees in successor. And we, as you know, are trying to work with the park department and some other, Swift Hat Shop is looking at that area of town. And so, while we're trying to decide what we want to do with the area down in Wharf Street, we felt it best to do a one-year extension on the easement, and the entity agreed, so this will expire July of 2017.
We have a motion in front of us?
I will make a motion to approve and sign a one-year extension of the grant of easement between the town of Milton and Milton Landing Condominium Trust.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item number sixteen is the town administrator's report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I have two things to report. First, I just would like to thank the Milton Interfaith Clergy Association and the Board of Selectmen for hosting the vigil last week on Wednesday, I believe, June 15th, in honor of, not in honor, but in memorial for the Orlando shootings. And I do have to say, I did attend that vigil, and it was quite moving, and I believe everybody in attendance was extremely moved, and you just, and you just, you wanted to go out and do something. You wanted, the situation was so tragic. And I just, again, want to thank the Board of Selectmen and the Milton Interfaith Clergy Association for hosting that. And then, the second thing I wanted to talk about is a meeting that was held last Friday morning with the FAA, the administrator, Amy Corbett, and the deputy regional administrator, Todd Friedenberg. Also in attendance was your chairman, Katie Conlin, and Cindy Christensen, your CAC representative, and Andy Schmidt, your ENAC chairman. It was a very congenial meeting. It was the first of what I hope will be successor meetings and in an open dialogue going forward. The town articulated our concerns with the Next Gen and the airplane traffic over the town of Milton and a few other issues. And the FAA administrator Corbett was intently listening to us, and I do believe that they do want to try to find some solutions. I don't know if they'll be in the short term or the long term, but they did hear us, and we will be following up what we did articulate in that meeting with the lengthy letter for the Board of Selectmen to sign outlining, just to get on the record, all of those issues that we talked about. But again, I think it was congenial, and I hope that it opens dialogue going forward. And I think it shows that Milton is getting recognition when the FAA administrator comes to your town for a meeting.
Well, we appreciate all the hard work that everybody has put forth in getting that attention and the hard work that they're continuing to do. I think on behalf of all of our residents to alleviate some of this burden.
Absolutely.
Chairman's report, as I'm pinch hitting tonight, I will, I'm excited to say that on Sunday at 1:40 prior to a two o'clock game, there will be a bench dedication at Cunningham Park for Al Thomas. It's, you know, he's a former Al Thomas, member of Al Thomas's team and someone who I really looked up to as a, really a local leader and a man for others. I couldn't be more excited that this is happening. It's going to be a big day. I know that there's going to be a baseball game against the McKay Club, which has always been their rival, and a cookout afterwards following at the Legion Post. So, for anybody who's interested to come out and support, I urge them to come out. Al was a person that, really an icon in this town, who we can't say enough about. He was a guy that did so much for so many people and never wanted credit for it. And I think that that, that really is who Al Thomas was, and this will be another way to memorialize his great efforts for all he's done for this town.
Very true.
And that's all I have. Some members' reports?
The only I have to say right now, this is WHAM weekend, so I just want to let the public know that we are Milton, you know, we have festivities on Saturday and Sunday. We have great fireworks exhibition at about 10 o'clock at night and music leading up to that, and then a great Gaelic festival on Sunday. So, I hope anybody can attend. One of the rare weekends that I'm not down in Dennisport, so my wife lets me get out of my chores for a little while and attend.
Yeah, I'll be bringing my kids. We're all looking forward to it, and I think that they've done a heck of a job, all the organizers, and I think it's going to be an exciting weekend.
Yeah, it should be. Should be.
Thanks. Item number nineteen is citizen speak response.
Covered that already pretty much.
I think we've pretty much covered it all right up front. Item number twenty is future agenda items.
And basically, just the ones that we still have outstanding, you know, the...
Financial policies.
Financial policies.
Yeah. And I'd also like to, I think on July 12th, allow Chairman Hurley to, I mean, former chairman Hurley, Chairman Conlin to weigh in on some of those future agenda items as well.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, now, I'm going to adjourn the, this meeting of the Board of Selectmen, and I'm going to call to order a meeting of the trustees of the Governor's Stoughton Fund. And the first item on here is the approval of the letter to the DCR regarding Unquity Road curb cut. We have Director of Planning Community Development, Bill Clark, here with us.
I have a letter that town council and I created for the request for a curb cut from town farm property onto Unquity Road. The issue here is, it's stated in our RFP for the property that the town would be responsible. It's in the PNS that the town would, the town would get access to the property from DCR. That's what this letter states. That's what this letter states, and you have it before you on letterhead, ready for signatures.
Okay. We have a motion before us?
Yeah, once I get there.
I know. I'm trying to get there myself.
This is insane. Mr. Hurley?
Okay, bottom.
Okay. I'll propose a motion to approve and sign a letter to the Department of Conservation and Recreation requesting approval to obtain an unhindered public vehicular access to the proposed development on the subject property from Unquity Road.
I'll second that motion. Any further discussion?
The only thing, Bill, is, you know, discussion, and I haven't a chance to, to read the whole letter yet, but in a discussion that we had with DCR Commissioner, he had, he had asked that the town consider, in exchange for that, squaring off the intersection of Holland Street. I don't know if that made it to you, or...
That is accurate.
Or if it's something that we want to add to that letter?
I think it, it may be something that-
Mr. Chairman, I, if I recall in that meeting, the Commissioner is going to request that once he gets this, once he gets the-
The request.
...application from Pulte. The Commissioner is gonna request that he square it off.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Okay. Then I have no other.
Okay, seeing that there are no more comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And we're gonna forego executive session tonight.
We have an executive session. Governor Stoughton's executive session.
We have a Governor Stoughton's executive session.
Okay.
Yeah, so now I'm going to move, propose a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of approving executive session meeting minutes and considering a request from an ED resident for financial assistance and to return to open session for the purpose of adjournment. Adjournment, excuse me.
I'll second.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Mr. Burns? Yes.
Just let that sit for a few seconds at least.
Are you giving that button?
This one?